Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 19th December 2013 Board of Selectment Meeting. We have a rather short agenda today. Got some annual license renewals, ambulance abatements. Cover the status of a variety of infrastructure projects. Talk about some potential changes to our HR policy. Continuing discussion on the annual town meeting articles and a few other items. Just one reminder, this Sunday night, the annual Hatfield Illuminarium take place. Ceremony here in the steps of Town Hall. Reading at the library, starting around 5:00 for children. And also a musical program at the Congregational Church. Certainly, everyone, welcome. Are there any other announcements?
I don't know.
Any announcements?
I've got right now.
Anyone here for public forum? Community forum? Okay. We're going to change the order of things today because Paul has some other business that needs to get to. But Paul, let's begin with you. Cover your items today.
Yeah, well, just some status on some topics here. On the audit, we did receive the final audit last Thursday, which I forwarded to the leasing company the same day. So that is in the works. I believe, you know, we should have the go-ahead from the leasing company next week because Phil's been in contact with them. Also, in relation to that, in talking with the auditor, he expects to have the free cash figure for us before the end of the year, as well as the management letter. So that's where we stand with that.
Before we go off, I know we're going to have the auditor in here to give us the, to walk through the management letter with us.
Yes.
Let's also include a treasurer and accountant at that session as well.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we talked about, you know, setting up a meeting sometime in January, so. Moving down the list here, just to let you know, the Center School received the contract back with the architect. I'm actually meeting with them this afternoon. They want to take another quick look at the building. So that's in the works. And just as a reminder, on Smith Academy Park, the RFP is out on that, and that is due on December 31st.
That's an RFP for design.
The design for Smith Academy Park.
Not destruction.
Moving down to topic four, I've looked at the payroll section of the HR policy. I've got some questions about it that we need to talk about, and some proposals, though I don't think we're going to have time to get into it today. But, you know, let's table that for the next meeting. But, you know, you can look over what I've done and on the...
My only comment on that was, if, not to belabor, and we will come back. I understand the business about salary employees, time of attendance card. That's fine. But some way, we need to formally document on an ongoing basis. If a salaried employee is taking a personal day, or a day of vacation, or a sick day, that should be formally documented.
That's right. And I made out some draft, draft forms.
I didn't see. All right. I'll look at it again.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
I've got one comment on that. Elected officials is one thing, but the salaried officials, the more I thought about it, if you don't have some kind of a follow sheet, like they put in eight hours or 10 hours, whatever they plan, when it comes time, if they're looking for more money because they're putting in more time, you're not going to have anything to substantiate it. So my suggestion would be to have them fill out a time card. If they put in 10 hours, let them put down 10 hours. If they put in 20 hours, they put in 20 hours. But put some kind of a dollar, I mean, a time figure, so at least you've got some tracking device if the time, if it comes to that. That's my only suggestion.
We'll come back.
We'll come back to that.
Yeah.
I also put in your packet a status of the FY '13 articles, you know, the projects, et cetera. I figured it being mid-year was time to take another, another look at that, though things actually haven't changed that much since the last time we looked at it. Though, you know, some of the Town Hall project and the emergency service building projects are, you know, coming to completion. So that's that. And then finally...
When we do town meeting, how about adding the potential list to, for '14, for this upcoming as well?
Yep. 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 I'm already working on the warrant.
And we just had another one with the dog licenses.
Right.
Come up.
Right. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was the energy reduction plan, which I completed, and Green Communities Annual Report. I submitted both of those to the Department of Energy Resources on Monday, so that is taken care of.
So the report and the plan are both...
In the state agency's hands.
Do we expect anything from them, other than received?
If they have any questions, I'll hear.
Okay. While you're here, Paul, I've got a couple things.
Sure.
One is the half a day on the day before Christmas.
Oh, right.
We usually give that to everybody every year, so I'd like to move that we continue and give a half a day off to work until noon, and the other half is off for Christmas.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right. And also, let's see, on your part, the wages, just want to know where we're at with the, for the salaries and stuff like that.
Well, we brought that up earlier, about where we are with that HR committee and their recommendations regarding the classification annex to the HR policy and recommendations for...
I'd like to get that done by February.
Well...
Yeah. My intent is to pull the committee together, you know, next month.
But that's your job, to pull it together?
Right.
No question about that.
Yeah. No question about that.
Okay. Okay, those are two things that I had for you.
Well, and the other, and the guidance for the committee was, we realize that there may be a gap between where we are today and where we intend to get at some point in time, but it doesn't have to be a leap from here to there in one swoop. We can phase, phase it in, something that's affordable.
Yeah. Well, you know, when I start crafting the budget, we'll see how things look.
Well, that shouldn't even have anything to do with the budget right now. What you should be looking at with this committee is the sliding scale of an entry-level person to the maximum level that they get, and what criteria it takes to get to the maximum, whether it's years of service, 50% of that, and the other 50% is based on their annual review, or something like that. Something has to give an incentive to how you're going to get to the top, and if they meet that criteria, then they get it. That's where that should be going. So irregardless if it's for the budget or not this year, we can decide that. But those are the things that you should be looking at on how this is going to work.
Agreed.
Okay. I have one other thing. I was going through the warrant yesterday, and I'm noticing that there's, lunch breaks are not being taken. Okay? And that's by law, you're supposed to have a lunch break? Okay. And I want you to check on that.
Okay.
Okay.
As far as, as far as, what do you mean? Getting paid or unpaid?
You have to take a half-hour lunch break.
No, you don't.
That's what I understood.
No, you can have a work through, legally, you have to have a break. A break, not a quote lunch break. I know this for a fact. You can work through lunch. In other words, you can stop for 15 minutes, have a quick bite to eat, and then go back to work and get paid right through. That's considered a break.
But as long as they put it on, you know, put, well, that's something...
It doesn't even have, it doesn't have to be on any timesheet. If a person is sitting at their desk, they stop for 15 minutes and have a quick bite to eat and continue to work.
It shouldn't be recognized on their timesheet?
Nope. Doesn't have to be.
No?
Nope. They can work a straight eight hours and be gone.
But you're taking 15 minutes for lunch on the town's time, and that's...
Yeah. That's right. But it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be documented that you're doing it. You know what I'm saying?
All right. Well, can you check on that, Paul?
I will.
Just checking it.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I caught that I was looking at. Other than that, that's it. Phil, is Phil going to be here or not?
No, he's apparently ill today.
All right. Then Paul, maybe you can bring this up to Phil. The stairs in the back coming out of the gymnasium, those were not shoveled. Those got to be shoveled at every snowstorm. That's part of our, our building, so if that's an emergency exit, somebody's got to get out of there, and that's an issue. And also, the parking lot, we're going to have to do something with Capewont because they park over here, and then when we go to plow in the morning, they're, they're all plowed out, and the cars are still here, and we're all jammed up with snow. So it's good for Mike over there, but it's not good for us. So we either come up with a solution of no parking after 8:00 in the morning, or 7:00 in the morning. They have to get the cars out, or they'll be towed, or let them park over there and clean their cars off, and then move them over. That way, Tony would have a chance to clean our lots first. Okay? But it's not working the way it is because it's jamming us all up.
Yeah. That's been an ongoing problem that we can't...
But it's fine for him because his is all cleaned out over there. So that's not fair to the town employees, and they've got to park, you know, somewhere. And they take up most of the parking when there's a snowstorm.
I thought we had made some arrangement for parking behind the center school.
They did, but they're parking over there. So there's an issue here. I'm just bringing it up. Okay?
All right. Well, let's not let it hang. How about talking with Phil? It's just off the agreement that we had worked with the housing authority.
I'll talk to Phil about all that.
Prior year.
Okay, that's all I have.
Because I know they get some special deal by clearing the whole place out. But you're right, they're just moving it over.
Yeah. It puts the burden on us.
That's what it means.
So, you know...
I mean, what if we had them parked, I think I suggested this, right across the Town Hall? I think that's wide enough where you could parallel park right in there. If you, you know, put lines on it.
Right in front of the Town Hall, you think?
No, on the other side. On the other side of the street, in front of the center school.
Put drive-in parking?
Yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't have a problem with that. Right up to the sidewalk, you're saying?
And then they can stay there. When they move out, then we can run through and plow, and this back lot will still be open.
You want them to clear their car off within that storm period. Sometimes there's, there's a car over there two days without being cleaned off, and that's not right. And then Tony's got to deal with it later and come back and try to work around it. So that's not fair to him. So what works for one doesn't work for the other.
Let's, we're not going to tam it here, but let Paul and Phil...
And Phil will deal with that.
Deal with the housing authority. Did you have anything on the emergency services building before?
No, not really. Ed and I just attended a job meeting and...
Completion schedule is now mid-January?
Really, mid-January. Yeah. The contractor hasn't submitted a time change order yet, but I think we're, we're looking at mid-January sometime for substantial completion, probably total completion the end of the, the end of the, the end of January.
You know what?
Okay.
The only thing that won't be done is the excavation on the outside, because naturally there's snow, and they're going to have to come back in the spring and do that.
Yeah.
There's no way they're going to put grass seed in the snow.
No.
One other thing, and I know we're not going to resolve it here, is back to the water transmission line.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we look for Michael and Phil to come to our next session in January?
Next meeting?
And the issue there is, you know, how can we truncate, is that an option, the current project to fit the budget, given the extra $400,000 for going under 91? And/or, you know, what are, what are, what are the options? And for example, if we're going to truncate, do we need to soon tell the contractor that, you know, we're not going to do that last segment because of this change, this unprojected requirement?
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get a hold of Mike.
And the other, the other piece is, if we're going to have a special town meeting, Mike's earlier estimate was the March-April timeframe, that they'd need that additional $400,000 to continue the work. Either it's go, no-go by then. So we just need to get our act together here pretty quickly. Okay?
Okay.
What's the fire department exit design options? What's with that one there?
Well, that was Phil.
That's Phil. Yeah. The, you know, the...
Changing the way it works?
Change the door over here. The door over here, yeah.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Yeah. On the fire department building.
Now, I got it. I got it. Just the roof.
Just for clarification, because I've had some conversations with the building inspector on this, and all Stanley is looking for over there, the door doesn't meet code, the door needs to be changed, and that, and we've got a leak going on over there, and that needs to be fixed. That is all he's looking for, right, Stanley? Anything else?
The roof has to be looked at. There's a, there's a leak in the roof and the, and the door.
Where are we looking at? In the front of the...
The front, yeah.
Or the connector was in the old Milkman's.
Stan, would you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay.
The fire department's asking for a door, and also asking for the roof to be patched because it was leaking.
A roof, like what was on the existing?
There's a roof on there, right. And just fix it. And kind of cosmetic the face of the brick. That was it. That's all they wanted.
Okay.
This was three years ago.
On that roof, that's a flat roof that comes from the building out to the old Milkman School. That was an after, it was built to tie the two together.
Right.
What was originally on the Milkman School is that hip roof that came out, like a 10 by 10, 12 by 12 roof. That's what we're talking about, putting back on for aesthetics to look somewhere decent. If you leave it the way it is, you've got the homely block that are, where it was ripped off from the building, and, I mean, you can patch it, but that's not, I wouldn't put that on my house, and I know you wouldn't put that on your house, okay? The way it is right now. So that's what I'm saying. You can, you can patch the roof for temporary, for the winter, and do it in the spring, but I'm not in favor of leaving it there. And if you guys want to leave it there, that's up to you. But my, my take on it is to put that 12 by 12 roof on there and get it done.
Well, hey, that's what you want to do. I mean, I have nothing to do with the building, but that's all they wanted, is a door and make sure the roof doesn't leak.
But you can't leave it...
It's going to be done, and nothing's been done.
Aesthetically, you can't leave it look like that. I mean, you can, but that reflects on us, and that's not, to me, that's not okay.
New basketball court and everything right here, it doesn't look very nice driving down the street.
Okay. Thank you, Stan. Anything else?
No.
You had Kevin?
Yeah, just, I, the change order number 8B has proven to be quite controversial, the back stairs. So we discussed this at our last meeting, and I said, well, I think the best thing to do is to get the architect in here and the building inspector to discuss the situation. So Kevin Shay from Architecture EL is here, as long, as well as Carl Mercieri with Marroy Construction, because there was, in order to get the, the issue resolved, you know, there was a meeting of the minds, myself, Selecton Lesko, the building inspector, you know, representatives from Marroy. So I've asked them here to, so we can have a discussion about this and get this cleared up one way or another.
I just want to bring up the fact that the last time we talked about this, I didn't have an issue on the stairs. I didn't have an issue on bringing the, with them ripping them out and putting the cap on. That was all fine. So I just want to make it clear that, you know, that, that part on, as far as I'm concerned, was satisfied with what the mistake was, and it was rectified by Marroy, and so that part was taken care of. So the only part that I think we're talking about here is the last step that was added and whatever else needed to be done. That was...
Basically, the last, the last step and the handrail.
Yes, and the handrail.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are the two things.
Yeah. So I have to go.
Well...
If you need me, I'll be downstairs.
Okay. Stanley, on the handrail, I guess it's going to have to be, what little bit I know about that, I guess you had stated that there was a second handrail that had to go on it downstairs, the step going down on the exit part?
Code calls for two handrails. There's only one handrail.
Stan, let's come back up. Let me rewind for just a second. We're talking about the Town Hall renovation project and stairs at the south west corner.
The stairs require two handrails by code. I talked with the architect, and he agreed with me, but it wasn't on the blueprint. And I says, we've got to have a second handrail. And he agreed with me, and as far as paying for it, that's, I know how you guys are going to resolve it.
Okay.
It's code. It has to be on there.
So I think the original understanding was that the design met code. What was constructed did not need code.
No, the design.
Okay.
It's not the design. There was no hand, there was no handrail on the blueprint.
Okay. So we have to meet code, and we didn't need the handrail. And it wasn't on the original design?
Correct.
So that was not, not an error in construction? It was, it was following the design?
If there's, you know, to clarify, there's two pieces to the puzzle. You know, the subcontractor, you know, made an error with the, the construction or fabrication of the stair and the landing. That was corrected without, you know, cost to the town. The other part of that equation has to do with the handrail that we did not originally show on our drawing. We included it in the SKs while we were working through with the contractor on the stair alterations because instead, the rail is required. It was omitted on the original drawing. And then the, the second part of that change order requires an additional step at the bottom in order to meet coordinate with the grade that's there. Those two changes in scope, both required, either for code, or grade, or a combination of the two, result in a change order that's on the table right now. The rail is installed, the concrete work is installed, the work is essentially done except for the painting. And that's hopefully going to happen this weekend as the weather warms up. We've got unseasonably warm December, a couple days coming, so, so they're hoping to button up the outside work with this little heat spell we've got.
Kevin, I guess the clarification that we're looking for, Jan had a concern, was the last, where we put the last step in? We decided to put the step instead of the slab, that you were going to put the slab in, and the slab was going to cost us like $5,000 or something like that? I don't understand how it wasn't figured in into the whole plan and how it became an extra. Can you explain that?
Okay. Well, the resulting, we were working to, you know, all along, in all, all variations of schemes, we were working to get down to the stair to a landing level that would work as ideally as possible with future ramp construction. So we were setting the stair now, keeping an eye on future grading concerns. Okay? We, to fabricate the stair, when we, you know, included in our scope, we basically field measured from the stair to grade in order to calculate that. We did not have a site survey with spot grades from the stair out to the parking, you know, east and west, 10, 20, 50 feet. Basically, at the time of the design, we basically took it on a product itself to measure it in field from the stair to grade with the expectation of being able to work out the modest walkway that we showed. In hindsight, maybe we should have spent the money on a survey, so we would have all spot grades. But at the time, it seemed reasonably, you know, workable or calculable that we could get the stair and landing down and make the grade. You know, in hindsight, maybe we could have spent the money, but the survey would have cost $500 to $1,500 to survey that leg of the building. So we tried to hold off or stave off that survey cost and just work with our own in-house field measurement. Was that a great idea or not? I can't say. We were all along, as you know, working to not, you know, to manage the budget and try to work efficiently and get you a product. Good or bad, between our measurement and the actual grade calculations, once the contractor got their shot grades and set their stays, we needed an extra step to make it work. The, that's, that's the reality. The, if we'd spent more, we would have had maybe a better document that didn't have a seven-inch gap, or five or six inches. So the handrail was inadvertently left off the drawing. That's $350, you know? The question that's at hand is, yes, these are both charges for the job. If we had paid for the survey, we would have had a longer ramp or more steps on the drawing. With the rail, we would have had the cost included in the bid document. So, you know, the question is, you know, what is the exposure to the town comparing the competitive bid pricing to today's pricing from the contractor? You know, if we expanded the drawing, whether it was an extra step, a longer walkway, the rail, you know, the contract would have been increased probably, you know, 80%, at least 80% of the number that's, that's on the table now, that are the regular boxwork, the site work, and steel work. So, you know, the question is, you know, there's a few hundred bucks on the table potentially, you know, I mean, Carl could maybe speak, what might be the difference? And I know honestly, his pricing has been very good on this remediation work, so I would even argue that you might have paid 10% more or less at the most comparing the two. You know, I think we'll, you know, if we look at a $550,000 job, our process change orders are like 1.5% right now. We've got approvals on another 1.5%. And those are largely filled in with the barriers board work and discovered conditions. You know, for rehab at a half million bucks to come in with a few grand worth of change orders, you know, in our, in the world we work in, that's, you know, a pretty respectable goal to be under 3% to 5% of change order issues on a, you know, on rehab. You know, we've got the opportunity to do it once. We draw a lot of lines, and we're looking to work efficiently for you folks and deliver a competent job, you know? Do I have any question that we haven't done that? I think it's a great-looking job. You know, we have a good, nice fit and finish for the money. You know, Marroy's done a great job keeping the job moving and, you know, on schedule. We do have a modest extension in front of us, but, you know, they've, they've worked pretty smoothly straight through the job. So, you know, if it's a, you know, if you're denying it, or if that's the town's intention is to not support it, the contractors invested the money, spent the money. So there's really two or three options on the table, you know? Prove the change order. If you deny it and want to make a claim against me, then it has to come to me and my company, and I have to forward it to my insurance company. I can't negotiate on behalf of my insurance company because there's liability attached to that negotiation. You know, I, we worked really hard to hold down our costs, put forward time. You know, I've got, you know, a lot, I've got a lot of extra time on the job, and I'm trying to hold to our scope. We're reaching the limit of our site visitation time, site supervision time, you know? I'd rather not nickel-dime the town for the hours, you know, AAB alterations requests, change order time. I mean, we're processing two or three change orders now, one for signage. You know, I've handled that one piece of paper a couple times, one for the time, and then, you know, the floors. You know, we have two or three change orders that we handle and process. I'm trying to absorb in the course of the work for the town, not trying to say, well, there's another half an hour, hour, hour and a half, two hours of extra time. That's not how I want to run the job. So really, you know, that's the reality. There's a human factor that comes into every project. I think we've done a respectable job, and you've got a respectable quality product. You know, our overall fees end up about 7.5% for the work. Honestly, I'd say that's about as low as you can ever approach for, for, I think, you know, capable design services on a, on a public bid re-innovation project. So really, it's, the fact is, there's $1,000 to make the adjustment. Three-quarters of that is... Three quarters of that is against the survey or site difference and then 350 bucks on the handrail. It's really, that's what it is.
I just wanna be clear, Kevin, that's not the only, that's not the only change order. I mean, I'm going down through the list here, there's about 10 change orders at the tune of about 20,000 bucks.
Oh, no, I understand.
I don't even know what the other change orders are because they were never brought to this board, so...
Well, they've all been run through. And Paul's your point of contact.
Yes.
All of them are presented and are signed off by Paul.
Some are minor, like...
We'll, we'll deal with that afterward.
Like materials, asbestos stuff.
Well, I just wanted to be clear because, you know, the people are gonna think that there's only $1,500 that we're talking here.
No, no.
No, no, he, he mentioned the 3% total.
Yeah, the first change order, number one, has been signed and approved and processed and that was $9,000. Okay? You know, I could pull it out, but there was framing, there was discovery, there was some abatement that went with that. There were some, there were some door changes to the scope that we came about or made about, but then we already, we didn't have the time to, we could've pushed the bid back, but we didn't have time to push the bid back or a few doors, so we basically told Paul we have to start out and make a couple door adjustments. That was known as we were moving from bid to contract. The, the current change orders, the stair rails were rejected. Like eight or nine grand was in the casework that's just been initially approved to comply with AAB. That's, you know, a relatively modest cost to avoid all of the requirements of elevator and other full access. You know, we basically, you know, we gave them the care of compliance here and that gave us a stay of execution, if you will, on upgrades to the ramp, on, you know, replacement of the ramp, on the elevator. So basically, put a little bit of money forward to make the job happen. Same thing with the fire sprinklers. So the mailroom, right now, we've got the 97, 95 for the mail, the casework and the clerk and the secretary. The mailroom floor, $874. We opened the floor up and there was nothing there. The stair going down and kind of coupled together carpentry. There's $310 to redo two signs after we approved them. And then there's some, we had to remobilize the floor standing to rejuggle the schedule and try to move your people around. Normally, you know, in the course of the work, the contractors have sand the floors, finish them and move in, but they had to, you know, rejuggle the schedule. So, all in all, you know, if it all comes up to 18 grand out of 550, of which, three quarters of that $18,000 was required by code or, you know, the AAB and/or discovered of unknown hidden conditions, we really only have $3,000, $4,000 on the table, you know, between the reality of the drawings and then the, the construction. Maybe Carl could speak to what he normally sees on a renovation project for discovery or, you know, you know, the reality of getting a drawing, getting a bid, getting a bill, but...
Given the age of the building, typically somewhere between 8% to 12%.
Ken?
I, I don't have any problems with what you just said. I, I understand, okay. I understand there are little hidden things that you can't see until you get into them, rip them apart. But I guess my first question would be to Stanley, the building inspector. These, these stairs, the way they were repaired, do you consider these as a permanent, they're gonna last for, for years to come or is it gonna be something that they're gonna start flaking in 10 years or...? I mean, that's my question.
My answer is with the lingo and weather, I can't give you an answer myself. I mean, I wasn't here the day they poured the cap on. They said they took pictures, they put bonding agent and stuff in there and then they poured the stairs. We were at a meeting that day, so I never even saw the stairs being poured the second time or the cap.
The reality of that is, you know, the direction was to chop out the stair and landing that was there. You know, they, they poured the thickened cap with bar reinforcing and repoured the stair and landing. They didn't just pour a two inch top that's gonna allow moisture to get in and crack and chip off. It's essentially an original pore for the stair and landing and the cap is the cap. So, you know, we wouldn't have supported it if we didn't back it a few good about it and, and, you know, well, Carl could speak for Moroi, but they don't wanna build something that's gonna come apart and have to come back to them.
Okay, I'd like to, I mean, just to play out to your question. Did you think that we just did a cap over existing stairs?
Well, that's the way I kind of understand it, yeah.
It's not, we did, I'm gonna explain exactly what we did. We removed the stairs and put new stairs in. So to answer your question about flaking or not, the answer would be no. As long as you don't apply solvent.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, I think we're talking two different things. He's talking a cap over the stairs. This is the cap that's over the outside wall.
The wall cap is cast in place and installed to the top of the wall, so again, it's four, six inches thick?
Yeah, and it goes down over, so there's no chance of any water getting in there. As long as you guys put the rebarbed wire, I mean, rebarbed rods in there. Yeah, and you got pictures of it, so, I haven't seen the pictures, but, you know, as long as you did it the way we all talked about, you know, that's...
No, my other question is, well, actually, this isn't the true cost that you've, you've given me. I got a bill from the DPW for adding, let's see, $1,763 to put the blacktop around there.
Yep.
So that's a total of $2,800, $2,884.
Well, that all ties in with the same, you know, we added the contract.
Well, I, I just want people to know that these are little costs that nobody's bringing up.
Well, honestly, I have not heard or been presented with that cost.
I mean, it's, I've got a copy of the review if you'd like.
Oh, I believe you, I just haven't seen it.
It just came from the DPW director. But it's, to me, that's an added cost that just kinda gets slid under the carpet and, you know...
No, no, that's understood that it's added. Honestly, I was not, it was basically pulled out of the contract from us and moved over there. So, does that, so yes, so the total money on the table, apparently, you know, there again, I had no control over that, that cost either, $2,800.
Well, actually, you do have control over the cost because that should've been thought of when you designed the, the, the actual workout. I, you know, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't have a problem with paying the $300 and whatever it is for the break.
Yep.
I would give you that. I would make the motion to pay the $300 because it has to be. But as far as mistakes go, I just can't honestly tell the townspeople that I, I like paying for mistakes.
No, no, nobody does.
And to me, that's how I feel about it. If I have people coming to work at my house, contractors, roofers, whatever, they make a mistake, they pay for it and they, they redo it to what it's supposed to be at their cost, not at my cost. And I feel that the town should be treated the same way.
No, that's understood. There is a difference between, you know, the drawing and the construction. You know, I'm not the builder. I can't take it out and redo it as you're referring to, okay? And what you're talking about is the difference in the design cost, you know, that cost would've been incurred had we drawn a longer sidewalk or a different sidewalk. So the difference on the table, you know, granted, the timing is never good, you know, finding out or discovery of the cost later in the game is not ideal. But the question, what the impact to the town is the difference in what it costs today versus what it would've cost in competitive bid. And like I said, we also tried to avoid the cost of the survey, which would've been a cost to the town, so... It's, you know, I understand where you're coming from, you know, I'm speaking plainly about the reality of work and what we did and I think, you know, I think history shows how we've performed and we've been straight with every, every meeting and every piece of work and made every effort. And if that's the case, then we can understand where we're coming from and, you know, the town, you know, all I can do is have the town submit a claim and I'll forward it to my insurance company.
Stan?
Uh, this is for the architect. I haven't seen a bill for the stairs, but we had to put a new cap on top in order to get the stairs to look halfway decent, what we got there. Is this bill for the bottom step plus the cap going across and down?
Just the additional step.
No, there's no cap involved in this price.
Cap is part of the corrective work.
Okay. How much is the step?
This is only the bottom step.
One step.
It was either put the slab in, the big slab that we talked about originally, or going with the step. Remember when we met out there? It's a heck of a lot cheaper to put the step in at, at the tune of whatever, $1,000 versus this whole slab at about $5,000. I think that's where the whole price is on off.
Well, you know, we've designed it three or four times.
Hold it. You keep saying $1,000. I'm saying $2,884. Because you had to add, the DPW paid $1,763 for blacktop, which is part of it.
So it would be added to that, but...
Well, I just wanna make sure you know what I'm saying.
And I know what you're saying. If you added the two together...
I can't even say the blacktop out there. I'm not sure how big of an area they paved and I don't know if you got a, I assume you got a better deal through DPW, but, you know, we, oh, we, you know, on our base contract, we had a certain amount of asphalt anyway. So it's all, I understand what you're saying. You know, it's all plus and minus. And that's, that's where we are, you know, I'm...
I guess the part that I don't understand, Kevin, is how the slab or the bottom pad became an extra. I guess that's the question.
Original design called for a stair down to an asphalt walk. The asphalt walk was relatively short, I'll say, the landing and the total walk lanes.
With what we got there right now?
Might've been about 12 feet. I don't know what's there now because I couldn't see it under the snow.
Probably goes up to what, 20 feet, Stan, because it had to go out to the corner?
You gotta have a 1 in 20 slope.
Because you couldn't, you couldn't put it out to the driveway, it had to go to the end.
So we, we, the stair down to asphalt connecting to the driveway. Since we...
So the asphalt part would've been part of the contractor's job anyway?
Right.
Okay, so this actually should be the contractor's...
It was removed and that's, well, that helps, well, we're, that's factored into the adjusted number. We've got a credit on asphalt work, we've got a plus on concrete work, that's all factored into the change order.
Okay, so... The only extra then that we would be looking at is the 1121 because this is actually a contractor's bill. Is that what we're saying?
No, 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 it was removed from the contract and given to DPW.
That is what the DPW, this, this, um...
You're not paying for it.
The 17 is, is coming out of DPW budget fund.
Right, but we'd be looking for a credit here, right?
That's already factored into the change order we have. So your net cost is...
Is 28.
...the net total is 28. 11 with us, whatever the town has, 17.
All right, one more time and we're gonna wrap this up.
Again, on the, on the stairs, my blueprint showed it all enclosed, the steps, right down to grade. My, my blueprint didn't show any concrete landing out and...
We had asphalt walkway.
Just asphalt going out, bituminous. Then you come up with, you get, it's either put a, pay for a new step or put a concrete pad in there.
Yeah.
I didn't see that concrete pad on my blueprint.
No, it wasn't. It was, while working through the solutions and the options, trying to mediate the repair, trying to mediate the grading with current and future needs, one of the options that we investigated included setting a slab so that then that slab could then abut to the future walkway work. It would've cost a little bit more now, but it would've been coordinated and prepared to abut to the future work. Instead, we went with a lower cost walk asphalt adjustment, which ultimately will probably come out when the new walkway and everything goes in and that'll all be reintegrated into the work. So it's kind of a now or later kind of come discussion.
I think where Stan's coming from is, on his print, I don't know how many steps it showed, but if it shows 10 steps going down on his print and then there's 11 steps, then that's not according to his print, so that would be, that would be considered extra work because it wasn't figured in in the plan and we would've had to pay for it at some point anyway.
That's what we're talking about, we're talking about one...
But I think what Stan is saying is that it shows steps going right down, so the question would be, how many steps are there versus how many are on the plan?
Right. The end of that is one additional treadmesser.
Well, the thing is, if them steps were poured the first time up the grade, where it, coming out with no landing out the door, coming down, the bottom step was like 16 inches up, okay, and I says, "How come there's not one more?" Formed off that and poured one more step and he says, "That's what the print is." Well, the print shows it down the grade. And it wasn't down the grade.
Yeah, well, we're all agreeing that...
Grade was up 16 inches, what are you gonna pour, you know, how are you getting down to it?
That's, you know, the relative grade after it was shaved out relative to the asphalt.
The grade would've been probably an angle of, of about like that and somebody would've got hurt coming off them steps or that pad with what he had to do.
It wasn't right, right from the start.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, this is the right way to do it. It, it's not, it's not dangerous, it's flat. There's no built up, you know, because before it would've had been built up and so on.
That's, that's not my point. My point is, it was a mistake and I don't believe we should be paying for the mistake. That's...
I understand what you're saying, you know, my, you know, only, you know, interpretation there is, you know, whether it was bid before or after, there's gonna be a price for that much work. The timing of the discovery is not ideal, but the time and the scope of the work are, you know, interrelated. So, there would've been a cost associated with it. If we increased, added a step, added a longer walk, that would've increased the base contract. What's technically on the table is the difference in cost from the base bid to what you got today. You know, did you pay 10% more today? Did you pay 50% more? You know, that's, you know, it's kind of a subjective conversation.
Let's, let's, let's close this. I'm sorry, did you have anything?
I'm gonna offer either some clarification or more confusion to the issue.
Clarification is good, confusion is not.
I, I mean, I'll just quickly give you, you know, the base contract offered six ridges on landing platform. When the guys laid it out on the field, they realized that the grade was a little bit off. That's where they voted. They made the mistake. We came up with a corrective measure. At that point in time, there was a series of modifications. One included an additional step, a platform turning to the right. That was rejected. The final was, is the one that we've not talked about on November with the landing platform in a very long bituminous walkway going out past the recycling machines. We agreed we'd add one more step to leave the window up because of the raising the grade, remember? And the bituminous was gonna be done by others. So, to answer your question, the cost of the bituminous that you're looking at may be more than what was originally in the base bid. There was very little bituminous. In fact, we're just patching what we're cutting out, so... So, at this point in time, the change order is only for the additional rail and the additional step at the bottom of the stairs. That's it.
I don't, I don't think, I think what Jan's saying, it's, it's not the contract, it's not your fault on that there. It's more on Kevin's, Kevin's side of, because if it only called for a little walkway going out to the driveway and you can't have that because it's, it's against building code to go out into a, a walk, I mean, a walkway can't go into a parking, or a driveway. So, it's not your issue on there, it was because it wasn't designed properly to go out there. I think that's what, that's what you're saying, Jan.
But aren't the drawings reviewed and approved for construction?
What's that?
Aren't the drawings reviewed and approved for construction?
Yes.
Yeah, but if he looks at it and he sees it at ground level, there'd be no, I wouldn't have questioned it either. Looking at the drawing, I wouldn't have questioned that at all because it was at ground, it was at ground level.
The bottom step is supposed to be the grade, all my friends says, right at grade.
Well, we work off this elevation, we look at section.
Well, somebody screwed up on elevations.
And, and, you know, the bottom line, we're, we're trying to work with it. We, we realize, you know, we moved forward a little too quickly and tried to make an adjustment to make it work out. We took responsibility for what we did wrong and we put it back.
Did a good job.
We, you know, we incurred some delays and I gotta tell you, you know, it cost quite a bit and you gotta crew and you look at the prevailing wager that we're paying them. They come to the streets at home, it's very costly, so I can certainly appreciate the additional cost.
And we're pretty heavily invested in this too. This whole thing, I mean, 20, 30 hours of time, easily spent around this.
Yeah, let's...
You know, we're invested in getting to a good product. If we, if our hopes and endeavor to save the survey money to get to the drawing upfront costs us in the end, then, you know, it also, you know, none of this was done in the back.
I'm personally satisfied that everyone's done everything possible on management side, on contractor's side, to designer's side, to keep the cost down and manage appropriately. Someone wanna make a motion on this?
Because I understand with what you're saying, I would like to make a motion that we pay the, the bills and include Monaham's bill in the contingency and take it out of contingency because that's part of the project. I believe we got $7,000 left in the contingency, so that would take away this and whatever the... contingency. So that would take away this and whatever the.
So there's a motion to approve change request eight B regarding Town Hall in the amount of one thousand, can't even read it, one hundred twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents.
That's correct. And include Monaham's bill for the rest of the sidewalk. That should have been part of the contract that was given credit and that we had to do the additional. So it comes out of the contingency.
So two parts to the motion. One, to approve eight B as well as the bill for.
Seventeen sixty-three.
Seventeen sixty-three for blacktop. Is there a second? I'll, I'll second it. Any other discussion?
No, I'm, I'm just saying it's, it's a total of twenty-eight eighty-four that we basically are giving away. That's, that's my issue. That's it. I'm just saying.
No, I understand. I respect it. The fact is, we got a code, we have to comply with the code.
Absolutely. And I agree a hundred percent. But that should have been looked at before the project was done. I mean, there was people all over this Town Hall when they were doing their work. And it's not my fault or the town's fault that they couldn't check the elevations before writing up a set of stairs.
Okay, but the comment was, what's the net to the town? And I think Kevin's outlined that yes, they could have done the survey and if you added that cost back in here, you, I mean, the net effect of this whole thing is.
Again, I'd be willing to pay the three hundred and whatever it is, three hundred and fifty dollars or three hundred dollars for the rail. We've already paid this bill out of DPW money and we'll call it good. But that's it. I would not go any further than that.
I'll, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Oh, one, you, the latest eighty, recall, we recently submitted a request to the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board regarding certain requirements that they had asked us to complete by one December. Have you heard anything formally or informally concerning that?
Any correspondence from them?
Okay. We've heard nothing.
We're working on.
To me, we've done our job requesting and, you know, I'm curious to see what their response will be. In the meantime, we're, we're working hard at getting the casework completed up front in the town offices.
The only thing they're doing, Kevin, is putting in the cabinets, right, for lower for handicap?
Yeah. And my notice, as you know, that one, you know, started with simple casework and took, we discovered exposed plywood and just, you know, multi-level floors.
It was a lot more than, when I, yeah. When I looked at it in there along with these guys, I, I didn't realize it was that much work. But when we really looked at it, there's a lot of work involved and especially this office here, Louise's old office.
Yeah, whatever happened before with that plywood scrap leaving us with two levels of flooring is.
Right.
So, so we ended up, you know, filling and shimmying, moving the equipment as the simplest way possible to create a small, lower accessible counter. You know, then of course, by the time we've done all that with all the batches, we had to put some new ECT in there and there's electrical lines. We had to get an electrician to move the outlet.
How about on the completion? What are we on, are we right on target for the completion next week or?
The, we just processed a change to the seventh, sixteenth to seventeenth of January for substantial.
You're having another meeting after, I think at eleven o'clock today, right?
We are the window, we were going to meet following this meeting. We kind of had a loose schedule with Paul and then the Rama, Rama is going to come as well today.
All right, because I'd like to attend that meeting if at all.
Yeah, well, so we'll be down there. So I'm not sure what you're.
This on the color of the?
Yeah, you know, basically the, there was comments that came back to our office and, you know, my associate, you know, visually, you saw it would also look like a difference in the finish. So, you know, the word to the contract or the supplier and the manufacturer was, well, if the client is talking to me about it, if, if multiple parties are seeing what looks like a noticeable difference in the finish, then, you know, then we're going to carry that conversation forward and present it to the supplier and manufacturer, you know. Notwithstanding the fact that we are dealing with natural or again occurring materials, you know, wood, which takes staying finished differently. But, you know, in this world, we tend to, you know, with manufacturing and finish processes, we typically see a pretty accurate representation when we have a sample.
I thought there were oak doors going in there, Kevin. Were they planned?
No stairs? No. Oak trim, they're solid core masonite because they need to be labeled. If we had to do rated oak rating metal doors, they would have been like double or triple per door.
Okay. I noticed a red color on there and I thought, oh, what a gaudy color.
Well, actually, we chose the door that trimmed, it darkened up a little bit, is basically like a maroon or a burgundy. That was picked to complement the sign, which was picked to complement exactly, but you've got a maroon, you know, reddish maroon door already. So granted, it's a step off of it, but it's in the same family of the colors the Town Hall already had. It was either that or we were going to spray it to blues and greens or grays. So that's, you know, everything.
I'm sure it'll look good once it's all done.
So, actually, we worked, we worked it backwards. I think we, you know, just on the paint, you know, I think Carl Wallen, you know, we went through three different samples matching the sign so that it didn't look like a plastic sign next to a door of a slightly different shade. You know, he ultimately had, you know, got two pieces of material, did two, two paint samples, had a guy drive it to my office just so we could approve a final actual on-material sample. So just to get a door that looks like it makes sense and it was pinned, you know, this, you know, there are probably hours and hours of time, as are we, piling through paint books and finish books, trying to work it out. So, you know, these projects, the littlest things sometimes take a life of their own on. But that's what we do in the course of the job.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
It looks, looks very good.
No hard feelings?
No, no, no. Appreciate the comments.
I just have my beliefs. That's all.
I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
There's a set of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the board of selected minutes of twenty November two thousand and three?
Couple of changes.
Okay. Subject to the following. Go ahead.
On the second page on the fire department, it says, Selectman Lesko asked Mr. Genovese to call Doug at RK Miles. It should say in there regarding the fire department roof.
Okay. And I have one on the water transmission line. The, on that second page, line two, should read four hundred thousand dollars, not three hundred thousand dollars, the jack under Route ninety-one.
Okay. The next page downwards says FRTA. At the very end, it says, Mr. Boudreau was told the town assessment would be between five to seven thousand. And he also stated that the, the businesses would be willing to pay for that dollar figure. It should be in the minutes. That's what he said. Okay. And then under ATM articles, under mosquito spraying, oh, that's just a note. I'll bring that up later. That, that one's fine. Under the next page, under sewer abatement, it should say, Mr. Genovese presented application for abatement for a pool liner repair. Selectman Lesko said the formula would be the bill should be attached to the application from the contractor stating the number of gallons of the liner. That's what I asked for on the bill. It shows what the gallons were from the contractor that is putting in the liner because there's contract that just gave a total price with no size of the liner or anything. So that way we actually have a bill that states how much, how many gallons it holds.
Well, just a note key, since Paul's not here, a note for Phil. He ought to go back and take a look because we just updated a year ago or so the DPW rules and regulations that spells what documentation is required of applicants. So if there's any change to do what you're saying, it ought to be in there. So.
But for the minutes though, that's, that's what I, I had said. That instead of a formula it'd be a bill should be attached to the application from the contractor stating the number of gallons of liner.
Did you have any other changes? Subject to those changes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve ambulance abatement for November two thousand thirteen in the amount of seven hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a series of license renewals, alcoholic beverage license, entertainment licenses, auto amusement licenses.
I'd like to move.
Class one and two licenses. Is there a motion to approve the annual renewals as submitted? And there's one more we'll come back to.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just have to sign all the licenses.
Yeah, there's, what was the other one now?
West Trek, class two buses.
And also, is there a motion to approve West Trek class two license, which was not in this package?
It's all, it was all set, ready to go, correct?
Yep.
So is there a motion to, Jan moves, Ed seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd also like to bring up one more thing.
Is one other thing? We've been getting some requests from different establishments.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve Double B's Bar and Grill to extend their hours on December thirty-first till two AM?
Well, there's two of them.
What we've been, what we've been doing in the past, I think, is we've been just doing a blanket of all the establishments.
If they wanted it.
Because like you've got the Legion, you've got.
We've already done one other one.
We've asked them in the past if they're interested in staying open to something a little later.
And we followed up on here to ask till what time and they asked for till two AM.
Yeah, we usually extend it to two AM anyway.
And we've already acted on Grill and Chill. Right? Last.
No, we didn't act on the extension. This is new.
No, this was just for the breakfast.
That was the Sunday one we.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. I thought they also.
So Jan, your motion was to extend it for all.
For all establishments?
I'll second that motion.
Establishments meaning not packaged stores or, okay, just.
Just the one with the restaurant licenses and the, and the barroom licenses.
All right, just read back the, the motion so we're all clear on what we're.
Jan, you just ten hours, two AM for restaurant licenses.
On?
For New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve. All right. That's Jan's motion.
I second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Phil's not here. Well, there's nothing. Any other, any other business for today?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up one more thing. Phil's not here, but I, I'd like to, maybe Jan, a while back, a number of years ago, we had a rule of film that we wouldn't plow the roads until it was up to three inches of snow on them. And, I mean, this past storm, the guys did an excellent job. By the way, I'm not fault in that. But the starting time of plowing, I feel that it should be two to three inches, not one inch or a half inch. I, I think, you know, that, that should be addressed. It is wear and tear on the blades. It is wear and tear on the equipment.
I didn't realize they were, I, I know they were sanding and they were treating the roads almost immediately because it was getting, it was getting pretty greasy.
It's the plowing that I was saying.
I, I didn't even realize there, anybody did.
They were out, it wasn't even, my guess is, is under an inch when they were plowing. And I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again, you know. However, he sets his crew up, that's one thing. But I, I wouldn't want to see the guys plowing with, and one other person up on the mountain also told me the same thing.
I don't, I, I didn't realize that.
I happen to be working over there. So maybe we get back to our original, you know.
I'll, I'll talk to Tony.
Three inches or something like that.
I'll talk to Tony about that.
The only other thing is, while you're talking to DPW, on announcements about parking, and there's two pieces to that. One, we ought to take a look at our DPW, we ought to take a look at our bylaws, number one. I understand there was a telephone CTY about no parking, no street parking. The, seems there ought to be an effective time for that, you know, closing time, you know, between such, such a date at such and such a time it goes into effect and to be over at such and such a time, not just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'll be honest with you. I don't even know where that came from. I, I think Tony was asked and he didn't know.
No, I, I asked Tony.
And he didn't know.
He didn't even know that there had been a ban.
Right.
Put it in effect. So there's a little communication issue there, but I'm sure that can be taken care of. But, but the announcement to the public ought to have some clarity to it.
Those should be putting that announcement over on the CTY.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It came out at five thirty on Friday. Well, we didn't really have the snow until the next night.
Right.
So, you know, it fine, put it out five thirty Friday, but to be effective such as such a time on Saturday.
You got a notice that there was no parking on Friday?
Yeah.
I didn't get any.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Did you?
Telephone.
Not on Friday. It just said due to the impending storm, there'll be no on-street parking.
Yep, but.
Going after top of them because I didn't get it at all.
Well, I didn't get it on my BlackBerry. I'm supposed to get it.
It's on the home phone.
I know.
I should have got it on the home phone.
Well, you're, well, you get it wherever you've designated to get it.
Right.
I'm not, I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm not even sure where this whole thing originated from. So let me, let's find out where that, let's find out where that came from first.
No one to misunderstand. DPW did a great job. The roads are clear.
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not picking on it.
No, no, I'm just saying that, well, no, I'm just saying that, find out where it originally, you know, because I don't, I don't, I know I talked to Tony. He says, he didn't know anything about it. And I don't know, I haven't talked to Phil all week. So I will get a, you know, I, I can talk to him about it and see what's going on.
All right. Well, you can bring it up to him when you see him, send that there.
We already took care of that last, at our last meeting.
I thought we took care of this here.
We referred that, this is the Benson letter. We referred that to the planning board.
Right.
And you, you had some comment about, did they make an error on the mapping?
Yeah, and they took, they either, because it was voted here, they didn't change it on the map. You know, the map was adopted without the change. So that's an error and I think that just has to be corrected on the mapping.
But, but we already referred it to the planning board last meeting.
But it came back to us for some reason.
Okay, is there a reason why the correspondence came back to us from Ms. Benson?
Because I, I think they were showing us the article eleven.
It was presented to me by Paul.
Okay, we, we previously referred the issue to planning board.
Right. And this wasn't, this wasn't attached when we talked about it. So Paul attached it and he wanted to show us, this is what I'm thinking. He's not here to say, but my thinking is that this is the way it was voted to adopt the map the way it was. So if the map was wrong because it wasn't changed here, then it was adopted that way. But it actually should have shown the change before they adopted it.
So he's just showing us the source of the error?
I don't know if it has to be, town council would have to rule whether it'd have to go back to town meeting or it would fall into this because it wasn't changed, it was our error on the mapping. Okay. So that's something he's got to get clarification. Mosquito spraying, I just want to bring that up also.
The state pays for that, you know, out in the eastern part?
Pardon?
The state has been paying for all of that out in the eastern part. Maybe you want to check.
I know that. What, what's happened here, and we talked about this at one of the, the meetings in North Hampton, is to create a, a regionalized group. And we had joined a regionalized group for mosquito spraying and we could get.
One contract.
Money from Boston. Okay. Right now, the individual towns got to forfeit it themselves.
Well, I, I think just regular towns out that way, we're just.
Well, there, there's a thing in here. It says, there's a group that, these are the coalitions or the groups that, right here, mosquito control districts. If you look on the last page, the districts are what we need to create in order to be part of. So it'd be. it'd be the Western, Berkshire has one, but we don't have one for Western, or Franklin, Hampshire, or Hampden County. So, that's what we're talking about, is grouping together and to get more funds from the state, because there's, there's over a million, or two million dollars, something like that in the, in the coffer over there.
I mean, something really should be done, I.
It'd be a good action for HCOG.
The what?
That'd be a good action for the Hampshire Council of Governments to pick up and run with as a.
That'd be a good, good point, I can talk to Todd.
Todd, or, or our representative, Fran Gutchen.
Okay, well, Fran can bring it to the meeting also, sure, absolutely, you wanna see Fran?
Sure.
See him probably when I do. And then the other thing that we're, the Board of Health was gonna do is ask to be put a separate line item in the budget and put a dollar figure in for mosquito control, because of the triple E, this year, we're afraid that it's, it's gonna be all over this part of the area, I mean, it was in Amherst last year, and between the monitoring in North Hampton, uh, North Hampton.
I mean, well, that's good, but I think we're gonna start looking more into, I mean, you've got people getting sick from ticks now, you've got people, you know, and the tick population is going crazy.
If you, if you.
It really is.
If you read this, with, with treating it this way, it takes care of the ticks and stuff like that, yeah, this, this stuff that is used, the chemical that's used, it takes care of the ticks and the population, stuff like that, and mosquitoes. So, the only trouble with this is that if it's sprayed at night, different types of mosquitoes come out at different times. It's crazy, because the ones that are given triple E are only found in, in certain waterways and ponds, and they're not found like by the river here. So they're found up in like Vernal pools and, and things like that, where the stagnant water is. I didn't really, really realize that there was so many different types of mosquitoes, and there's, you know, and there're different breeds that, that breed in different areas, so it's a whole process that we're going through here, so I just wanna make sure that you'll probably see on, on the, well, I'll bring it up at, during our budget season to at least put a line item in there. I don't wanna see it go into the Board of Health's budget, I think it should be a separate line item across that's controlled, you know, by the selectman or by the Board of Health in case we do need it, because what's gonna happen there, that the DPW would probably, the guys are, are trained and licensed to spray, so we'd probably have them do that. So there'd be a cost involved with that. I just wanna be prepared for this coming next season, okay? I don't wanna be behind, I'd rather be ahead, so that's what we're looking at, okay?
Do you have anything, Jan?
No.
Happy holidays. Let's ball.
Happy holiday to everyone, thank you very much.
Wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
And the whole list.
See you in.
Happy holidays covers it all.
That's right.
See you next year.